I'll call to order the regular board meeting of Tuesday, November the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. It's approximately ten and twenty. We advertised for ten a.m. We're in order to supervise the hearing room. Melody, Megan, and Gisby. Pursuant to A R S thirty-eight dash four thirty-one point oh-two H, the prior, the public will have physical access to the meeting place fifteen minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action. If you would stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. The order or deletion of any item on this agenda is subject to modification at the meeting, and the board may vote to reset it to executive session for the purpose of obtaining legal advice from the board's attorney on any matter listed on the agenda pursuant to A R S thirty-eight dash four thirty-one point oh-three eight three. We begin again with the roll call. District one?
Crosby, this is.
District two, Supervisor English is present. District three?
Supervisor Jed is here.
We have a complete board. Members of the public now also attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app, or by phone by calling six oh-two, six oh-nine, seven-five, one-three, or eight-eight-eight, six-eight-zero, six-seven, one-four, conference I D one-zero-five, six-three-six, one-one-seven, pound. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call five-two-zero, four-three-two, nine-two-zero, zero-four, direction. The board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item on the agenda. Speak to an agenda item or to call to the public, complete and return the speaker request form to the court of the board by nine-eight a.m. on the day of the meeting. Please note that some of the attachments may be updated after the agenda is published, and this means that some presenting materials displayed at the board meeting may differ slightly from the attached version. We begin with the call to the public. Again, I have Allison Morris on Teams. Are you there, Ms. Morris?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay, so I'm sorry. Boy, the, the Microsoft Word changed quite a bit, so I was a little disoriented. Anyway, the only thing I had to say about the last issue was that there, they do mention in the M O U a roster of partners, and I think you addressed it, Chair English, that, that really needs to be up there so a person, the county presumably, can understand who all is involved, and understandably, that can change over time, but the only thing on the website right now is the three chairs and a link to the video, so it's kind of hard to tell what's going on. Anyway, the other thing for this meeting, I'd like to just say, regarding elections, I really would like to express my appreciation and respect for the Elections Department, the Supervisor, Joe, and Marty, and the rest of the crew, they really had their hands full. I totally recognize that. There were a lot of things that kind of went wrong or were unexpected because of the two-page ballot and machinery and the variety of other things, which I don't really want to go into here because I think we were out of speed on that. It's amazing that with all the problems, there were no issues, and you all certified the election, which was great, much different than a couple of years ago, but I was appreciative of that. I did participate in the hand count audit. My group of three, I think that we were one of the five groups, hand counted twelve-hundred ballots, and I think if five different races, maybe if I'm not mistaken. Anyway, it took a long time, and we didn't get through what we were supposed to do, and I was there over eight hours. The rest of the group, I got a sub, came in the following day, Sunday, and wrapped it up almost the same length of time. My point is, if it ever comes up in the future, and you can quote me on this, anyone who thinks that a one-hundred percent hand count of ballots, I mean, every race and every ballot in every precinct and vote center and early ballots, is really absolutely nuts. It's just, you cannot get it straight and right the first time around. It has to be counted once, and inevitably, with three people, it's not going to get the right number. You have to recount, and sometimes recount again. One, I think, one of our races, we counted maybe four times before we got the correct answer. Anyway, it was a very informative and educational experience for me, and I have so much respect and appreciation, as I said, for the Elections Department and all their hard work, and just am glad you all did not insist on a hundred percent, you can count this year, precincts, vote centers, whatever, a hundred percent of anything, and also that you certified. So, that's it. Thanks very much.
Thank you. The next one is Radford Hyde on Teams. Are you there, Radford?
Hi, good morning, Supervisors. This is Radford Hyde from Sierra Vista, and I wanted to address the election business again, and now that everyone's done patting each other on the back for the terrific job the machines have done, which took us, what, thirteen days to count all the races? Was it thirteen? I think it was thirteen. It was a day or two before the deadline for the state to have us turn in our canvas results. Thirteen days, we have a duty capacity on those machines, I think of twenty-five-hundred ballots per day. That's the rated capacity, I believe, of those E S N S tabulators, and at a rate of twenty-five-hundred per day with thirty-five-thousand mail-in ballots, guess what? That's fourteen days. So, we're really running up against a deadline that is problematic. As you can see, we've run into problems before with not certifying or whatever the canvas in a timely manner, and we're going to run into that again. And I'd like to also point out that the, you know, it's, it's nuts. It's nuts. It is nuts. It's nuts to think that we could not count every race on the day of the election back before we had these machines and back before we had these mail-in ballots. We were able to do it before. We need to revert back to those, and I know what everyone's going to say, or some people are going to say, "Well, we just need to buy more equipment. We need to have a duty capacity of, you know, twenty-thousand ballots, so we need to buy ten more tabulators." Well, how much more money are, are people expecting us to fork out of our pockets in order to fund something as simple as counting ballots that we've done for, I don't know how many dozens of years prior? This is just ridiculous, and I, for one, am going to fight it, and I'm hoping the new board comes in and does something about it. So, congratulations to Frank and Kathleen as the new board members. Hopefully, we can get this going in the right direction and, and move on with this, but this pumping money into these machines is just a ridiculous solution. It's a, it's a problem. It's a solution that created a problem, and we need to create a solution by getting rid of them. So, thank you very much.
The next is Pamela Velay. I'm not sure I pronounced that in person. I'm glad they spoke to me. I'm sure everyone's tired of elections, elections, elections. I am too, but there's a couple of facts I do want to, oh, that I'm, the poll observer. What is your name and address first?
Pamela Velay.
Who are you?
And my address is ten-eight-four-nine, East Highway ninety-two, Hartford. I'm going to speak primarily of the in-person voting that happened for three weeks. That's, that was a new deal, but a couple of the facts I need to be aware of is that people, including myself and observers, the voters, many of the voters, perhaps not all, believed that there were tabulators at the polling sites. So, when they arrived at the polling sites, there were those that, and I estimate at least half of the voters during that timeframe, brought in perfectly good mail-in ballots to be spoiled and destroyed, to be turned around, to be reissued a different ballot with a different shape, the one-page ballot versus the two pages in the mail-in. So, I'm going to talk about voter Bob and, and county worker Mary a little bit. Voter Bob came in, and he came in, and the reason they were wanting to get rid of their mail-in ballots is mistrust, mistrust of the post office, mistrust of a box on wheels, mistrust, period. Okay? And I, why I know this, because I'm sitting there listening to them, okay? Talk. They're having discussions about this. So, and I actually kind of had the same feelings myself, so I was in on it as well, thinking, okay, they want a tabulator, but the vote, where the voting machines were oftentimes in a room that could not be observed. So, I could not personally observe whether there was a tabulator in, in there or not. I assume, based on the primary, based on Election Day, there were tabula, tabulation machines at these sites. I'm assuming that's happening during this early in-person voting, okay? So, that did not happen. What happened is voter Bob gets in line for an hour or two with his mail-in ballot to go up to Clerk Mary, who is, by the way, workers were very courteous and kind and very informative and professional. I will say that offhand completely, but she takes the ballot, spoils it, gets more I D identification on voter Bob, asks him to go around the corner, reissues the other new-shaped form ballot, gives him instructions, go into the room that I cannot see, and vote.
Your time is up.
Damn. Anyway, I'm sad for voter Bob, and because he came back out, pulled it, did everything, same thing he did with his mail-in ballot, and he put it in the same box on wheels. So, he did.
We need to move on to the consent agenda.
Yeah.
What now? If you have other information, you can submit it in writing.
Okay. I will. I have it.
Consent agenda, items one through eight.
Madam Chair, I move, we approve consent agenda items one through eight.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and unanimous and approved. We now move on to the public hearings, and with my understanding, the item number nine has been moved by the applicant, is that correct? Okay, so we move to item number ten.
Madam, Madam Chair, I move that we adopt zoning ordinances twenty-four-nineteen to rezone tax parcel two-oh-two, twenty-eight, oh-twenty-eight from R thirty-six residential district one dwelling for thirty-six thousand square feet to R U two rural district one dwelling for two acres pursuant to the application of Anthony Peters.
Sir.
We have a motion, second. I'm also going to open the public hearing for information from Mr. Maggie Taylor, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Supervisors. This is a staff presentation for docket R Z twenty-four twenty-one. The applicant is Anthony Peters. The property is located at Fort Grand and Taylor Roads. That would be tax parcel two-oh-two, twenty-eight, zero-two-eight. The current zoning is R thirty-six. The requested zoning is R U two. The plan designation is community growth and developing. Existing use of the property? There is no existing use. The proposed use is a lavender farm with a sixteen-hundred-square-foot farm. And the property is located about a three-quarters of a mile west of Wilcox. The property totals about eleven acres and is surrounded by a mix of undeveloped residential and other agricultural properties with like zoning district. Some drawn images showing to the southwest and the northwest. Section two-point-six-three of the zoning regulations identifies fifteen factors used to evaluate rezoning requests. Eleven factors apply to this down zone. Factors in favor, the request complies with all applicable factors. The down zone reduces the number of allowed principal dwellings. Again, the property owner is not proposing dwellings, is proposing an agricultural use. Staff has not received any opposition from nearby property owners, and staff has not identified any factors not in favor of this request. Staff mailed eighteen notices to property owners within three hundred feet, receiving no written support or opposition, and executed public notification between sixteen and twenty-five October. Based on the factors in favor of approval, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of docket R Z twenty-four twenty-one without conditions by a vote of eight to zero during its November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. Based on those same factors, staff also recommends approval of docket R Z twenty-four twenty-one without conditions, rezoning tax parcel two-oh-two, twenty-eight, zero-two-eight from R thirty-six to R U two. Thank you, Madam Chair and Supervisors. That concludes staff's presentation.
This is a public hearing, so I'm trying to determine. Present who wish to speak either for or against this decision? There are none, seeing none, then I will close the public hearing. We do have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion from the board before I ask for a move?
No, ma'am.
Yes, there is. So, I happen to be one of the neighbors who are adjacent at my mother, and we did discuss this, but we decided that it would, if, it's not going to have a problem, so we didn't put anything positive, but right now, I'd just like to say that's a very positive use for that, that corner. We look forward to it. That will improve the value of our property, so.
Anything else before I call for the vote?
Nope.
I did pose a public hearing, did I?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and unanimous and approved. Now we move to item number eleven. Let's have a motion.
Madam Chair, I move, we approve zoning ordinance twenty-four dash twenty to rezone tax parcel one-one-six dash one-eight dash zero-eight-five C from S R twenty-two, single household residential district, one dwelling for twenty-two thousand square feet to S R one-seventy-four, single household residential district, one dwelling per four acres pursuant to the application of Kathy Ziegler.
I'll second it.
We have a motion, second. We also have a public hearing notice, and so, Mr. Taylor, would you give us the information? I will open the public hearing so that I can be part of the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Supervisors. This is the staff presentation for docket R Z twenty-four twenty-two. Again, the applicant is Kathy Ziegler. The property is located in Sunsites Unit Four at the approximate corner of Fargo Street and Sydney Road, tax parcel one-one-six, one-eight, zero-eight-five C. Current zoning is S R twenty-two. The proposed zoning is S R one-seventy-four. The plan identifies the property for residential use, and it is located in growth area D, which is a rural growth area designation. The property is undeveloped. The proposed use is single-family residential utilizing the county's owner builder program. Property is located in Sunsites Unit Four, approximately one and a half miles west of Highway one-ninety-one. These parcels were actually combined back in two thousand and ten by a previous property owner. The current owner has purchased those with the intent of down zoning the property, again, to participate in the county's owner builder program. Some images, this would be the property viewing west and northwest. Section two-point-six-three of the zoning regulations identifies fifteen factors used to evaluate rezoning requests. Nine factors apply to this application, which, again, is a down zone. Factors in favor of approval, the application complies with all applicable factors, compatible with low-density residential development pattern of the area. Down zone reduces the number of allowed principal dwellings. Staff has not received any opposition from nearby property owners and has not identified any factors not in favor of this application. Staff mailed twenty-seven notices to property owners within three hundred feet. We did receive a few phone calls, curiously, what's, what's going on with the property, but we haven't received any written support or opposition. And staff also executed the public notification process between sixteen and twenty-five October. Based on the factors in favor of approval, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of docket R Z twenty-four twenty-two without conditions by a vote of eight to zero during its November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting, and based on the factors in favor of approval, staff also recommends approval of docket R Z twenty-four twenty-two without conditions, rezoning tax parcel one-one-six, one-eight, zero-eight-five C from S R twenty-two to S R one-seventy-four. And Madam Chair, that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
And this is a public hearing, so I need to find out if there's anyone present who would like to speak either for or against this issue. There are none, seeing none, now I'll close the public hearing and ask the board members if they have any questions or comments before I call for the vote.
I do. I wanted to know what the difference between S R one-seventy-four is and R U four. It appears to be the same thing as far as the four acres minimum, but what's the difference?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Jed, that is correct. Most property owners that wish to participate in the owner builder program are aware that the minimum zoning district site area requirement is four acres, and a parcel must actually physically contain four acres. It's usually going to be a request to R U four or S R one-seventy-four. S R one-seventy-four only permits site-built dwellings, whereas R U four also allows manufactured homes and rehabilitated mobile homes. That's the key difference. The rural district allows a few non-residential uses, whereas the single household residential district is more residential-focused.
Okay.
But that's the big difference, and in this case, the owner, participating in the owner builder program is proposing a site-built or prefabricated building in the interest of the development pattern of the area, which is site-built. There are very few, if any, manufactured homes in that vicinity.
Okay. I just, I remembered it was R U four, owner builder was R U four, and this is a different designation. That's my only question.
I might have asked a similar question, and I thank you for that good explanation. Thanks. No, no.
She'll play the comments, and I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and unanimous and approved. Now we move to the action items. Number twelve, Jed, would you like to explain or give us the motion?
I'll give you the motion and explain. Madam Chair, I move that we approve Community Enhancement Fund expenditures for District Three to provide twelve-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars to the city of Sierra Vista to support Sunrise and Reap Goodness Project, which is a five-oh-one-C-three nonprofit public food forest project in Sierra Vista's West End.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I have one question. Is, is this money going to the nonprofit or to the city?
To the city. They're partnering in it, and the city's doing a lot of the work. There's, there's some site work and things. So, this was two lots in an older development in the West End, which is just single-family residential homes, and these two lots had a lot of problems with flooding, and the homes that were on them were a mess, and the city cleaned them up, and now they're going to put in a park-type garden food forest project on those lots. So, it'll be useful to the elementary schools there for education and useful to the community, and they're really excited. The city is really excited about it. I asked the city if they had a project, and they said, "This is the project we have." So, we've been around and around on who's doing it and why, but, but I, I love the project, and, and the city really wants the project. So, Mike McGlocklin, Matt, what's his first name? McGlocklin. Anyway, Mike McGlocklin is the one who requested it, so.
Any other questions or comments?
No, ma'am.
Then we have a motion. We have a second. Call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and unanimous and approved. Again, item thirteen.
Madam Chair, I move, we approve Community Enhancement Fund expenditure for District Three, provide a roll-off to San Simone to clean up an old store building that has been donated for a visitor center cost not to exceed one thousand dollars.
I'll second it.
Do you have a motion and a second? Do you have any further explanation, Miss Jed, since this is your request?
Just quick, it's, it's a store that's been abandoned in a terrible mess, and, but it still really has good bones, and I think the, the owner had passed away recently. This, they have a little, a little organization, community organization, which also is a five-one-C-three there, but they just asked for help to have a roll-off there one day so they could put, put all that extra stuff in there that is garbage in it to help them out, and I think it's a wonderful community project. Our little towns need things like that. They do. They need a little museum and a visitor center there, and I think that it's going to be wonderful. So, thanks if we can help.
We have a motion, we second. Is there any further explanation?
No, ma'am.
There are none, now I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and unanimous and approved. Next, item number fourteen.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair, I move that we approve fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five traffic case processing funds funding agreement as provided by the Arizona Supreme Court Administrative Office of the Courts, A O C, in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars, which includes twenty-five thousand matching funds from the general fund and fifteen thousand from local judicial collection enforcement funds, effective July first, two thousand and twenty-four through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Ms. Shipley, explanation, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors Crosby and Jed. Court Administration is requesting that the board approve the fiscal year twenty-five traffic case processing funding agreement. This funding agreement provides wages, employee-related expenses, and operating expenses for one full-time field trainer, which is currently filled. This field trainer position provides full-time onsite business process training and state computer support for the Superior Justice and Municipal Courts in Cochise County. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you'd have at this time.
Any questions?
Where did judicial collection enforcement funds come from?
They're regulated by statute.
Okay. How, how did, how did, how did we end up with fifteen thousand dollars of that category of funds?
So, this funding is twenty-five thousand dollars from the A O C, twenty-five thousand from general fund, and then the remainder of that is made up from the participation of the clerk of the court, and they contribute twenty-five thousand, and then the justice courts contribute the remainder of that based on their judicial productivity credits, which they just rolled out in October, and the board gets a copy of those.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Nope.
There are none, now I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and unanimous and approved.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen. We have a motion, please.
Madam Chair, I move that we certify that the total court revenues collected in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four exceed the total court revenues collected in fiscal year nineteen ninety-eight, and authorize distribution of the five percent set-aside revenues pursuant to A R S forty-one dash two-four-two-one.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Begin.
For the fill-the-gap revenue certification, Court Administration is requesting that the board certify that the total revenues collected in fiscal year twenty-four exceeded total court revenues collected in fiscal year ninety-eight, which is the baseline year, and authorize distribution of the five percent set-aside revenues pursuant to A R S forty-one dash two-four-two-one. So, total court revenues for fiscal year twenty-four were six million, one-hundred-twenty-five-thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars compared to the baseline fiscal year ninety-eight total of two million, one-hundred-thousand, twenty-four dollars, which is an increase of approximately four million dollars. The total amount of the five percent set-aside for fiscal year twenty-four was three-hundred-and-six-thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars, which, based upon the board's action, will be distributed based on the formula in the statute. This distribution is used to supplement funding for the processing of criminal cases, and I'd be happy to answer any questions on this funding.
Any questions? Board members, no, ma'am. Jed? And we'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and unanimous and approved.
Thank you. Happy holidays. Thank you.
Next, item number sixteen.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the Justice Services Agreement between Axon and Cochise County Attorney's Office.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And we have county attorney for a complete explanation.
A complete one? Well, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's a very good point, and I also brought with me Ms. Dallas Fullington. She's our technology coordinator, because I needed someone smart with me. Let me give you an overview of this agreement, a quick one, as it were. What this agreement gives us for a price is unlimited pro licenses to this software, which lets us access redaction tools, what's called a multicam view, and transcription what's called a multicam view and transcription tools um, for all mat materials that are stored in evidence dot com. Unlimited storage. I noticed, uh, Mr. Joe Casey is here. He can talk to you about storage issues with these large digital files. Um, and also unlimited transcription and a redaction of faces, computer screens, things like that. So for example, uh, under Arizona law, a victim has the right to have their face blurred if they wish to protect their privacy. Um, normally that might take a full day to redact one body cam. Instead, this will use computer software to do that uh, process. So it is a lengthy agreement. Um, right now, uh, for this upcoming fiscal year, there's not a financial ask because, uh, Mr. Reeves was able to obtain the funding through DEMA for the first year of this contract. And we'll defer to Dallas to see what else I might, might have missed.
I, I just, I have a question. I know that we've had, um, problems. Uh, and we're looking for solutions in order to be able to address the, uh, the public request for records.
Yes.
And, um, is this a tool that's going to allow the county attorney's office to be quicker because everything has to go through the county attorney's office before it can be released?
Yes, so mainly this is being used on the criminal side, but because it's for our office, then, uh, the civil division, for example, will have a pro license. So if we're doing disclosure, um, on a CCSO, uh, public records request, and there's a lot of body cams, they'll be able to input into the system what needs to be removed, such as dates of birth, social security numbers, blur a face. Uh, there's a minor involved, so we need to blur the whole person. And this will handle that process, uh, much, much more quickly. Also, Dallas has some stats on what our current storage and usage looks like.
So currently in our evidence dot com system, the items that we receive from law enforcement, body cams, photos, audio recordings and such, uh, we have two hundred and forty-one thousand items of evidence in that system currently. And that totals twenty-sixth over twenty-six thousand gigabytes of data. That's a lot.
It's kept somewhere else in this contract.
That's correct. Um, it's housed, uh, digitally in the cloud. Uh, what's also great about that, um, understand for a felony case, there's a ten-year retention requirement for all uh, reports, evidence, et cetera. So, um, in the old days, the quote, good old days, our filing cabinets got full, then a closet got full, then part of civil got full of these old files. No one's going to look at them, but we're required to retain them. Now essentially, all of this is just stored up on a cloud base. We don't need to worry about, uh, buying a Connex uh, to store more files.
Any board members have any questions or comments?
None at this time. Thank you, ma'am.
No.
Any explanation?
Thank you.
So if there are no more comments, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and approved.
Thank you all very much. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Uh, item number seventeen.
Madam Chair, I move we approve professional services agreement twenty-five dash eleven dash DEV dash zero one for the hearing officer to address violations and floodplain regulations according to the fee schedule outlined in Exhibit B effective November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four.
You missed the words of zoning and floodplain regulations, so I'll second that with that correction.
Okay.
I'd be happy.
You don't have to.
Is it fair enough what the correction was? So we don't need to, so, so. Uh, Mr. Coxworth here is to explain to us perhaps the need for this and the desire to.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. This is an agreement with Gary Raymaker to serve as the county's new hearing officer. The primary function of the hearing officer is a third-party independent review of violations of the Cochise County zoning regulations. They meet about every other month, and there's about twenty to thirty cases typically, uh, per meeting.
Any questions or comments from the Board?
Mr. Coxworth, is Mr. Raymaker a pro temp judge anymore?
He's currently retired. However, he will be serving as a floating JP. And he has had discussions, uh, with the county attorney's office about that potential conflict. We don't see it on our end, but um, he may have to recuse himself as a JP, but not from the services he's providing the county.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Glad you found someone.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. There is no further discussion. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and approved. Now we have, uh, emergency services. Could I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve subrecipient agreement for the Emergency Management Performance Grant EMF dash twenty twenty-four dash EP dash zero five zero one three with the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs and the amount of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars effective July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Done. Can you give us?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Thank you for having me. Uh, the Emergency Management Performance Grant provides a fifty percent match for the Emergency Management Department here in Cochise County. The Emergency Management Department has, uh, two full-time employees and the grant helps pay for those employees, basic office supplies, the vehicle mileage, and most importantly, our mass alerting software, which allows us to send emergency alerts to the public via cell phones, uh, and landlines. Uh, the Emergency Management Department uses these, uh, funds to offer our training and exercise plans for our public safety partners. Uh, and we maintain several emergency plans, such as the Emergency Operations Plan, the Hazard Mitigation Plan, uh, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. And we also manage or liaise for the, uh, Local Emergency Planning Committee and their hazard plan.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah. Mr. DeShawn, how many employees and what type of employees does your department have?
Uh, we have two full-time employees, myself as a director and one coordinator.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I know you do a lot of work with the others and, uh, you take it to do that to help them to work out their hazard plans and whatever the people have to say. Uh, here is no further comments. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and approved. Next, we also under Emergency Services, um, could I have a motion please?
Madam Chair, we approve resolution twenty-four dash thirty-one adopting the Cochise County Emergency Operations Plan.
Second.
Is that the one?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I want to make sure I was at the right place. Okay, we have a motion and a second on resolution twenty-four thirty-one. You have any questions or comments that you want to ask, Mr. DeShawn?
I just want to say that was pretty impressive document you're holding in your hand there. I thought about printing it because I've had many constituents, um, ask me about that. Well, we have a military base. We have this. And I don't know why I've had so many that have been over the years, but I decided that I would not because I don't have a lot of time unless I was just going to pass it on. But, but it was quite a thing to go through all that and thank you.
Thank you.
I found some things that was, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
No, ma'am.
There are none, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and approved. Okay, we move down to item number twenty.
Madam Chair, I move we approve grant agreement number two-four dash CWDG dash eight zero two between the Arizona Department of Forestry and Fire Management of Cochise County for the Community Wildlife Protection Plan Project not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars effective through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
I'll second it.
Change wildfire to, uh, change that wildfire was not mentioned using wildlife.
Oh, okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Um, anything you want to add to the information that you gave us on this grant agreement?
Uh, no, it's right here in the narrative.
Any questions or comments?
No.
No, ma'am.
Okay, you're three for three today, it looks like. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and approved.
Thank you.
Okay, number twenty-one. Uh, from Engineering and Natural Resources, could we have a motion while we have gentlemen come forward and inject anything?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the Intergovernmental Agreement, IGA, between Cochise County and the City of Douglas regarding efforts to design and construct the connector road for the commercial land port of entry west of Douglas, Arizona, effective upon signing by all parties.
Morning. Sorry.
We have a motion and a second, so go ahead. Um, Mr. Name, Brad, and what, what, what you're doing here?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Brad Simmons, Engineering Manager, subbing in for Jackie. Um, this is an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Douglas and Cochise County as it concerns federal funding for the future commercial land port of entries connector road. This coordinated funding will be used for ADA administered design and construction. The county has road jurisdiction to apply for more grants, and the city of Douglas has specific match funding and technical and planning knowledge. The city currently has eight point one seven million dollars in funding that can be used for match on current and future grants. This includes five hundred thousand dollars as a match for the four point four million dollars received for design and NEPA clearances through the Arizona AZ Smart Fund. The county will also provide a hundred thousand dollars in match through her funds for the four point four million dollar grant. The road in total is expected to cost seventy-eight million dollars for construction. NEPA clearances are expected to be completed in April of this year, which will allow the county to start acquiring necessary right-of-way. Finalized design is expected in twenty twenty-six with construction of the roadway expected to be completed by twenty twenty-eight.
It's a project that's been long in coming.
Yes.
And it has always been a cooperative effort between us and the and City of Douglas, so I'm, I'm asking the Board to go along with this because we need to continue this cooperation as we work with the ADOT and get their cooperation and coordination on the roadway, which we hope will be theirs.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions from the Board?
No, ma'am.
Nope.
There are none, now I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and approved. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you. Have a great holiday.
Thank you. Uh, item twenty-two, Mr. Casey. Let's have a motion please.
Madam Chair, I move we approve room for the sale and purchase of wastewater effluent from the City of Bisbee for twenty-five years from the effective date of this agreement.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Are you going to explain this, Joe?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, uh, Madam Chair, members of the Board. This, uh, agreement would, uh, put in place the purchase of two hundred, the ability to purchase two hundred acre feet, uh, from the City of Bisbee. This agreement provides the initial groundwork for building a pipeline from Bisbee wastewater treatment facility to recharge the basin near the San Pedro River. The effluent will not discharge directly into the river, but rather into a recharged basin. This agreement will facilitate an additional level of water quality treatment as recognized by ADAQ to the filtering, through filtering the water through soil before it gets to the San Pedro River. The City of Bisbee has also just received a formulary grant from WIPA for the initial phase of this project. Uh, this agreement does not commit the county to anything at this point in time until we submit an initial contract for build for the pipeline.
Any questions or comments?
I have some comments. Uh, as I have mentioned before, the pipeline is going the wrong way. It is going west instead of east. And preserving the base flows of the San Pedro River is based on the requirements of the fraudulent spricka. Therefore, I'll be voting no.
Any other comments? Okay. Um, any no comments, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Figure shows two to one, still passes. So we'll move forward with the agreement. Item number twenty-three, could we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the obligation of two million dollars in American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds to MSS Business Transformation Advisory, Inc., MSS, to provide information as an asset and artificial intelligence transformation consulting service for Cochise County under state contract CTR zero six two six oh nine from December first, twenty twenty-four to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, as described in the attached scope of work.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, Mr. Casey.
Uh, yeah, so we're requesting the two million dollars of ARPA funds be used towards information as an asset project. Uh, this project has an end goal of providing better data and information access to the public and county employees. The project will build the foundational structures and govern, and data governance to support knowledge sharing, increased data security and access to critical information needed for better decision-making. Uh, there's a handful of things that this project will include, um, including preparing us for artificial intelligence, uh, knowledge management, management, so that when people leave the organization, we don't lose that, that information as well. Uh, digitization, improve cybersecurity, um, making sure that we have data readiness, including knowing and, and documenting all of our data systems, data sources, data classification and data retention requirements. Uh, it will also help us get in place good data information governance policies. Document the data flows and information assurance, readiness and artificial intelligence readiness, and just overall knowledge management and really knowing where the data is throughout the county and making sure we have the data in the right place for the decision-makers to use, uh, moving forward.
Does it require, uh, for people or someone on the ground to do this job, or does it require for training for the people that are inside? How does it affect the county by us buying this two million dollars worth of expertise?
Yeah, so it, it will require county support as well, county employees. But this is, uh, getting the services from a, an expert in this field to help us get everything where we need it to be. So yeah, there will definitely need to be training involved uh, as we move along with this process. This, the scope of work has a lot of details in it. Um, but it's flexible because we're two years out, you know, on this project. It can take a while. And as we go through this process, we'll be able to tweak it to meet the county's needs.
Madam Chair, uh, there is a speaker request form that was turned in. Uh, Mr. Hyde.
Twenty-three, I believe, uh, Redford Hyde, are you on teams? Redford Hyde, are you on teams? Does he show he's online?
We don't believe that he's on.
We called his name. Send it back. So one more time, Redford Hyde, are you on teams? No, then we'll move on. Okay, it, it sounds as though we're moving into a new age in our, um, IT department. And it's, it's always costly. Hopefully it will help the county in the long run to stay stable and not, uh, not get invaded by any of these outside sources that are always looking for, um, fresh meat. Any other questions or comments?
Well, Dan, and it looks like it'll make us a lot more efficient, and we've had some issues with being efficient.
I was going to demonstrate, uh, old technology versus new technology by dropping this on the floor and stomping on it and noting that it is still usable and legible. And I, I share your concerns about magical tech, technology.
I don't know. Kind of smothered me sometimes when I think of all the things that I don't know about technology that's going on. If there are no other questions or comments, then we need to, um, um, look to approving the two million dollar expenditure. So I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and approved. And good luck with the programs, Mr. Casey.
Thank you.
Uh, next is the state and federal legislation. I don't know if they're doing much at the state right now. I'm trying to decide who's going to need what committees, et cetera. Nothing to comment on legislation at this time. Um, summary of eternity bench, District One.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Uh, District Two, I, I do want to say we all have, um, many things to be thankful for, so that needs to be our focus every day, not just on Thanksgiving. And not to think of the troubles, but to think of the, the things that we're blessed with. Um, District Three?
I'd like to also say happy Thanksgiving and, um, and everyone enjoy this season where everybody tends to be kinder and, and better to one another. And on that note, um, I would like to mention the wonderful organizations that provide dinners, um, Thanksgiving dinner, um, on Thanksgiving to our communities. And you can go and, and pay a little bit to eat, or you can go with no money. And for, for instance, the Outs Club in Wilcox. And they always appreciate donations and volunteers, and I
And they always appreciate donations and volunteers. And I've seen that the donations coming out really well this year for those organizations. So thanks to everyone that's involved in that. It's an important day to me, my favorite holiday, and it's important that everybody gets to participate. So I like that about Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Okay, um, next meeting will be held a week. I forgot to ask County Administrator, you have a a long tedious resort for us that have to.
Great, but it's short tedious.
I, I'm going to read budget pages, one hundred to one fifty.
Okay.
Nope, just happy, yeah, happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. Uh, next meeting will be held today at one PM in the Board of Supervisors Chairroom for a work session regarding Facilities Department informational update. Having said that, speaking is adjourned.